Can I confirm that the live streaming has commenced?
The live streaming has commenced.
Thank you. Good evening councillors, officers and our viewers, live streaming tonight's meeting. My name is councillor Suzanne Newton, I'm the mayor of Darabin City Council and the chairperson of tonight's special council meeting. It's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's council meeting. I declare this meeting open at 6:03pm. This meeting has been held virtually and is available for the public to watch via the live stream link on council's webpage. Tonight's special council meeting has been called to consider the following options. Number one, notice of rescission or amendment, item 6.3 reservoir boathouse. Number two, public apology to Midsummer Festival Dadi Manwara and DAC. That's the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee. Number three, public transparency of council decisions. Number four, Northkirk Aquatic Recreation Centre. Pursuant to section 1136 of the governance rules, unless all councils present and unanimously agree to deal with another matter, only the business specified in the notice calling the meeting is to be transacted. Any discussions related to confidential information under section 3.1 of the Local Government Act 2020 will require council to move into camera pursuant to section 662. Councillors, may I remind you of the virtual meeting guidelines as follows? Please leave your camera on and please remain on mute unless you wish to speak. If you wish to speak or ask a question, please raise your hand and leave it raised. When voting, please leave your hand raised until I've called the vote. Note, there is no chat facility available between participants in the Zoom meeting. Acknowledgement of traditional owners, I'd like to start by acknowledging the Wondry Waiwarra people, the traditional owners of this land, paying my respects to elders past and present and recognise their continuing connection to land, water and culture. Item one is membership. I would like to introduce the councillors and the senior staff who are with us this evening. Councillor Chin Lawrence, Deputy Mayor, councillor Emily Dimitriades, councillor Gaetano Greco, councillor Tom Hannan, councillor Trent McCarthy, councillor Lena Messina, councillor Susan Rennie and councillor Julie Williams. And the officers in attendance tonight are Peter Smith, our CEO, Kylie Bennetts, General Manager Community, Carolyn Bouson, the General Manager Customer and Corporate, Rachel Olivier, the General Manager Operations and Capital, Vanessa Petrie, the General Manager City Sustainability and Strategy, Anthony Smith, our Governance Advisor. Item two is apologies and we have received no apologies tonight.
Sound is not clear.
My sound is not clear, okay.
Okay, it is for us, ma'am, it is for us.
One sec. Sorry, we're just getting ideas. I'll try to be as clear as I can, we're just getting a headset so that people on the recording can hear. But please let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. But I think we will go on just because we are in the meeting. So we'll go to item three, disclosures of conflict of interest. Councillors and officers, are there any conflicts of interest or interest to declare? No, I can't, so sorry. We'll now go on to item four, which is called council's occupational health and safety responsibilities. Council has an occupational health and safety responsibility to ensure anyone attending tonight's meeting feels safe, both physically and emotionally. I would like to remind everyone in attendance to be respectful of each other and as outlined in our governance rules, please note that councillors or any other person who addresses the meeting must do so in a courteous and respectful manner and must take direction from the chairperson whenever called on to do so. We'll go on to item five, this is item 5.1, notice of rescission or amendment, item 6.3 reservoir boathouse. Councillor, actually first I'll just check, are there any questions on this item? Oh councillor Greco.
Thank you, ma'am. I just wanted to understand for the clarity of councillors and also the public that may be watching this. If this rescission motion passes, can you just step us through what the process would be in relation to the rescission motion passing? And then what we are led with as a result of that decision?
Yes, Peter, do we want to go to you for that or to Carolyn?
It will be through you, ma'am, I'm happy to have a go. Rachel Olivier might help me, but through you, ma'am. The decision would revert, if the rescission passes, it would revert to the original decision of the 1st of February with the following addition that councillor Messina has added into the agenda, which is to extend the expressions of interest to also include community use. If councillor Messina wants to move something different to what's published in the agenda, she'd need to seek the leave of the mayor to make an amendment. I believe that might be of interest to her. But you need to do the procedural motion on the rescission first and then councillor Messina could either move what's in the agenda or seek to move something different with the permission of the mayor.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Are there any further, oh sorry councillor Greco, did you have any further questions?
Yeah, and just if I may through you, ma'am, to our CEO, just to understand that we're all on the same page of the difference between the original motion and the difference between the rescission, the motion that's going to be rescinded, and the change that councillor Messina is proposing to make as an amendment to the rescission motion.
Thank you, Peter, you just don't mute.
Apologies, ma'am, I might ask Rachel Olivier to just explain the difference between the two or Carolyn Bouson, she's there.
Thank you.
Councillors, I haven't, I've been preparing for this item, but I must admit I haven't anticipated that question and so I haven't lined them up precisely in that way. It's something we could do quickly now.
That'll be fine, Rachel, thank you. So we'll just pause.
If I may, ma'am, I have another question, if I can have that addressed, if that's possible.
Let me, Rachel, how long do you think it'll take to seek a, find a response?
Maybe three minutes.
Thank you, then yes, we'll go on to councillor Messina, what's your question?
Ma'am, through you, I'd like to ask the CEO, have there been any expression of interest already to Darabin council in relation to the site? And if so, how many? And are they limited to one particular, are they limited, what are they? Or any information can be shared, have we received any expression of interest on the site and how many?
Through you, ma'am, oh sorry, Rachel can assist there, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any councillors.
Thank you, do you have any further questions councillor Messina?
My understanding was that was some discussions that say that there were some expression of interest being submitted to council and I've been advised by an external party that they're formally putting an expression of interest, so I'm a bit confused.
I think Rachel's answered the question, but was there anything further you wanted to add, Rachel?
Certainly I could take a question on notice and any details would help us follow up, but I'm not aware of any.
Thank you, councillor Messina, did you have any further questions?
No, I'll wait for Rachel, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, so councillors, we'll just pause the meeting for the moment, just stay on camera just while we wait for a response. Unless there's any further questions from other councillors. Okay, so yeah, we'll just pause for a moment and we'll just wait for Rachel's response. So just for the audience watching at home, we're just seeking a quick response to a question from a councillor, we'll be with you soon.
Ma'am. So the decision that was made at the 1st of February special council meeting and then the proposed amendment that I understand councillor Messina would put if council decides to rescind the existing decision. The main difference between them is the decision refers to the budget process 2425 for consideration. And the proposed change today is to treat that as a standalone report that would come back to council separate to the budget process. There is a minor difference in how that report in each of them would refer to community use. So in the existing decision, it calls for an option as well as the option of seeking commercial operators, also an option that would look at the boathouse becoming a community-run meeting space, sorry, a council-run community meeting space. The motion that I understand councillor Messina might move tonight is instead embeds consideration of a community meeting space into an option relating to a business venture. And there's an additional clause today calling for public information through the website and social media.
Thank you, Rachel, are there any further questions before we go to the debate? Councillor McCarthy.
Thanks, ma'am, I'm just wary of the importance of process around any expression of interest items. So I just would ask if councillors have received information from prospective expressions of interest, can I just ask that that be confirmed for councillors, what they should be doing in that regard? That doesn't have to be in the meeting, but I would just ask that I'm noting that question because I think it's really important for us to observe any risks of conflict of interest in relation to this matter if we've been approached by any prospective applicants.
Thank you councillor McCarthy, I think we can take that one on notice, thank you. Are there any further questions? No, okay councillor Messina, would you like to move your motion?
Thank you, thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'd like to move the motion, yes, thank you.
Thank you, so the motion on the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you, and do you have a second for that item?
I'm not away.
Councillor Greco, thank you, councillor Messina, would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you, thank you, ma'am, thank you to my fellow councillors and officers and community for this opportunity to address this today. I stand before you to provide clarity and insight into the matter that requires our collective attention. First and foremost, I initiated a rescission notice with a sincere belief that the original intent may have not been adequately communicated. And the proposal at hand urges us to commission a report, because that's all we can ask for as a notice of motion. And that will explore an expression of interest to devolve to, into sustainable business models that could bring a visionary business model that encompasses perhaps the establishment of a cafe and includes community meeting space. That was always my intent, but that was not what was written in the motion and I've expressed that to those that have called me. It is imperative that we as a council transcend that confines, the routine thinking. And it's not about a narrow perspective and traditional boundaries. The proposal calls for a broader vision that goes beyond the ordinary, encouraging us to envisage possibilities beyond our usual scope. In addition, I wish to draw to your attention a notice of motion that was originally submitted by councillor Rennie and I took the liberty of including this motion on the agenda today without her prior knowledge. My decision to include it was motivated by a desire to ensure a clean state for the upcoming February ordinary meeting with no outstanding notice of motion overshooting any deliberation. And I apologise if I did not contact councillor Rennie, so I want to say that on the onset. In conclusion, I urge each of you to consider the broader implications of our decisions and actions and let us embrace a forward-thinking mindset that prioritises the boathouse now with no more further delays, 24 years is too long. And it's the most asked question after Preston Market north of Bell Street that people ask. And we need to stop the delay and just explore options and ask for an expression of interest. That's all it's asking for and I just want to ensure that that is a clarity. And I want to thank Kate Joss, who I spoke to at the Friends of Edwards Lake, to have this discussion. So I want to say thank you to the councillors and the mayor and I hope you reconsider debating this after this.
Thank you councillor Messina, councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the motion a second ago?
And thank you, ma'am, you to always have my right to speak at this point, thank you.
Thank you, are there any further speakers to the rescission motion? Councillor Lawrence.
Yes, hello, ma'am, mayor and Chair councillor Newton and councillors and residents at home. Look, I've been looking at this issue since the 1st of February, well, since the rescission motion was lodged. And going through obviously the history of the site, I know quite a great deal about it. And I've been in the building many times, including in its current use, which supports the maintenance of the lake, the environment of lake. I've not been convinced by any arguments that Italian, licensed Italian restaurants or licensed any kind of restaurants are in danger in the city of Darabin. But I am convinced by Edwards Park, Friends of Edwards Park Lake, that the water ecosystem remains under threat, yet great advances have been made through collaboration of the council and volunteers and indeed the committee that's outlined the vision that councillor Greco has been part of that committee. So I have heard officers say there's a minor change or minor difference between the two motions. To me, it's a very big change, a very big difference. And the big difference is we need to acknowledge the community's concern about the water quality, which has always been there for 20 years and now an emerging appreciation and championing of biodiversity. The indigenous wildlife are being protected by volunteers and they are coming back. This infrastructure was built to support volunteers doing boating. The boating couldn't continue. More than just an option that we should ask the community for, I will have to declare, I think we need to align, the council needs to align its values with the biodiversity volunteers who are assisting in Edgar's Creek, Edwards Park Lake, Mary Creek and Darabin Creek and who are active above Bell Street. So I'm not going to support this rescission motion.
Thank you councillor Lawrence, are there further speakers on this item? No, councillor Greco, would you like to now speak as the seconder before we close the debate?
Thank you, ma'am, you didn't, look, I'm supporting this rescission motion because as the officers have said, the main difference between the original motion and what's been proposed by councillor Messina is that the, is that the original motion proposed by councillor Messina, the part that really interests me was the part about doing something within this current financial year and not to leave it to the next financial year as the, as the motion was subsequently amended to. That would then push this again forward into the next financial year and then we get a further delay in regards to having some action taken regarding the improvement of the boathouse and an increasing infrastructure in the northern part of the city. As we know with our foreign people, this issue has been going on now for 20, 25 years and we have a bit of momentum where we can actually get a report this financial year of how we can accelerate and the expression of interest in regard to doing something at the boathouse. I agree that it's in my ward and I agree that we have a lack of infrastructure in the northern part of the city, who have often talked about that. Here is an opportunity to use community infrastructure where there is a need for community space. There is a need for the community to use council facilities. So what this motion, by rescinding this motion, what that does is that it merely puts that before us. We could get a report and then like that we can concurrently start to work on how we can push out an expression of interest rather than waiting the next financial year to consider an expression of interest. So I urge councillors to support this so we can move ahead as quickly as we can, given that we've got some momentum in relation to the boathouse, thank you.
That's fine, thank you councillor Greco. So we'll now go to the vote on whether to support councillor Messina.
Do you want to have a write a reply?
Sorry, you do have a reply, actually, I might just check on that because it's a, no, you do, I think, yeah, so feel free, yeah.
Thank you, I just want to mention something that's really critical and nobody's spoken about. The amendment that I was circulated earlier also talked about public transparency. We have not told the public about the progress of the 24 years that have elapsed with this process. We have not told the public about what's actually been undertaken during that time. We have not told the public about.
Could you speak to?
I am actually, ma'am, I actually am, ma'am. We have not told, we have not told the public about notice of motions that have not been addressed. This has been stalled, 24 years it's been stalled. My motion did not say anything about not including Edwards Lake Park. I recognise, our Friends of Edwards, I recognise their contribution, their important, critical contribution to the water quality. My motion has not, not separated that, I've included them. But I think that's been lost in the narrative of what's happening here. And it needs to be clear, they are included, they will be included. It's not them and this, it's about emerging of both and ensuring the public are transparent along the journey as well. Because it also calls for updated information on council's website and that people need to know what's happening with that area and what we are to do with that area, hopefully by council decision. And that's something that's been lost in the narrative and it's clear to me that that's not being discussed and I don't understand why, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you councillor Messina, I'd like to remind councillors to please show respect for staff and other councillors in the debate. I'll now put the rescission motion to the vote, so we're voting on the rescission motion, all those in favour. That's councillor Dimitriades, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, all those against. That's councillor Newton, councillor Lawrence, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannan, councillor McCarthy. That motion has been lost, so the resolution from the previous meeting continues to stand. So we'll now go on to, oh sorry, I'll just, just read out the next part, so we'll now go on to 5.2, which is the public apology to the Midsummer Festival Dadi Manwara and DAC. Councillors, do you have any questions of officers on this item? No questions, councillor Greco, is that a question?
Yes, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you, ma'am, Newton. And I understand, I received emails today that letters of apology have gone out to the to the three organisations that previously wrote to us because they felt that they were, that they felt that they had been not exactly treated well in regards to the council's previous resolution. I was just wondering what the status of that is and exactly when did the letters go out? I received the letter today in my email, but I was just wondering when the letters actually went out.
I can answer that, they went out on Friday morning, so I think about nine or 10am.
Just further from that, have we received a response from the organisations in question?
We haven't received, again, I can answer that, we haven't received a response from Dadi Manwara. I received a response from Midsummer and we've received some responses from DAC.
Okay, thank you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, are there any further questions before we go to the item? Councillor William.
Just want to confirm that those letters have also been circulated to councillors and they have received that too?
Yes, I circulated them earlier this afternoon.
Okay, because I hadn't had a chance to read it, so I wasn't sure, I felt like it was some information that I hadn't been involved in, alright, thank you.
Thank you, and I did raise it at the 1pm council meeting, which you were in, councillor Greco.
Hang on, you just said that you raised it, no, you didn't, I don't recall hearing that. I asked your question to go back whether, when you sent the emails and I said, yes, you said you sent an email around on Friday. I said, I did read that, but I had not read the letters that you'd sent to the organisations. But my question was after that was, did you actually get a response from those organisations? So today, I'm asking whether we had, councillors had received those letters, thank you.
So to clarify, I raised that I had written letters in the 1pm councillor-only meeting. I sent the letters on Friday morning and I circulated letters with councillors this afternoon. Councillor Greco, did you have a further question?
Yes, I did, ma'am, thank you. Just wondering, ma'am, Newton, did you consult with any councillors? And if not, why didn't you consult with any councillors before compiling the letter in order to get councillor feedback? As far as I'm aware, I was not consulted, I'm not sure whether other councillors were consulted and why councillors were not consulted on this matter.
I'm not sure how to answer that, so I drafted the letters and I didn't consult with councillors on drafting the letters. I'm the mayor of Darabin and this was on the public agenda and I wanted to respond to something that was put on the public agenda. So I've written letters to the three organisations. Councillor Hannan.
Sorry, ma'am, actually, I don't need to answer, don't need to ask the question, thanks.
Thank you, and I think I just clarified process that I do write letters quite often and I don't consult with all nine councillors on each letter. Councillor Dimitriades.
Yes, sorry, do you mind just letting us know where those letters are? Because I still can't find them when you sent them today, I haven't seen them, so I just wanted to clarify. Could you please let us know, I'd love to see them before the debate.
You wanted to know what time the letters were sent, okay, just give me one sec.
Ma'am, I have them in my inbox at 2.30.
May, I have them in my inbox at two thirty PM.
Thank you. So the email would have been sent at two thirty PM and it was discussed at the one PM councillor meeting, which I didn't receive any apologies for, but we had five councillors at the meeting. Are there any further questions before we go to the item? No. Oh, sorry, councillor Messina.
Can you just confirm, May Newton, the one PM councillor meeting that you just advised that not, not all councillors were there? Is that a compulsory meeting or is that just a casual meeting for councillors to attend if they should want to?
I would expect all councillors to be at the Monday one PM councillor only meetings. And if you can't attend that meeting, I would expect to send apologies. Are there any further questions? Councillor Greco.
Thank you, May Newton. Given that we received the letters apparently today, without divulging any, uh, reaching any privacy arrangements, can you indicate to us what the substance of the letters were and what sort of apology was given to the three organisations in question?
Sorry, you wanted to know what was in the letters?
That's correct, May.
Okay, so did you receive the email at two thirty?
I believe that I did, May. I haven't actually, I understand that the letters were said. I actually haven't had a chance to read all the three letters. But I was just wondering for, for the benefit of others, if you could just indicate to us in, in general terms, what the nature of the apology was.
So I didn't make an apology. So I sent letters to the three organisations about the Palestinian flag issue. And I think I might leave questions there. Sorry, I'll just have recordings. We're back. I think we might leave questions there, councillors. I've had quite a number on this item. Councillor Greco, did you want to move your motion?
Yes, May. If I may, I'd like to move a revised motion in light of letters that have already gone out. And I'd just like to give a revised motion to reflect that.
Yes, that's fine. You can simply with the chairperson to do that and I accept that. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, May Newton. So for the benefit of others, the revised motion has been sent around. And I'm not sure if officers want to put their revised motion up on the screen to show the difference between the original motion and the revised motion. Yes, that's the revised motion. And I thank you, May, for allowing this motion to be admitted.
Thank you, councillor Greco. So we have a alternative motion that was sent through at five thirty-two today. So do we have a second for the alternative motion? Oh, sorry, I just, I've just noted councillor Demetriades, you have your hand up.
Sorry, May, I just wanted to clarify what you said, that you didn't send a letter of apology. You just wrote to those three organisations. So councillor Greco's revised motion removes that ability to apologise. So can I just clarify? Sorry, I'm a bit confused now because this removes the need for an apology. But you've already, you haven't actually sent a letter of apology. Is that right?
I've sent letters to the three organisations regarding the Palestinian flag motion and I have closed questions. So unless this is.
I was just clarifying what you mentioned, that, that you didn't apologise even though Datano's original motion asked for an apology. Is that right? I'm just trying to clarify.
Correct. Yeah. Thank you. Councillor Greco, did you want to connect with him? That's your alternative motion?
Can I just carefully read it again, just to make sure that it is? Yes, that's, that's the revised motion. Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a second for the alternative motion being brought forward by councillor Greco? Sorry, I can't see everyone on screen. Oh, sorry, councillor Williams, thank you. Councillor Greco, would you like to speak to the alternative motion?
Thank you, May, and thank you, councillor Williams. Look, this is a really sorry affair that we, we have been, been through. And we had three organisations, Midsummer Festival, Dadi Manwara and the, and DAC write to, to council. In, in them writing to council, they were very disappointed in, in the action that council took as a, as a direct result of a motion that was passed by council, which prompted them to seek seek an apology from, from the council. And without specifically mentioning the organisations and concerns attributed to them, but the, but the concerns that that were put forward by the organisations was that there was a lack of consultation regarding the removal of the Palestinian flag. And that council did not seek any permission to use their name justifying. And, and then for the removal of the flag, also, as has been noted in one of the letters, there was great distress that was placed on the organisation as a result of the, the, the motion that was originally put by councillor Hannan and supported by councillors. And also one organisation, without mentioning them, were so aggrieved that they said that they were being used, that the Aboriginal community was being used and weaponised in order to remove the Palestinian flag. They're not my words, councillors. They're words of the, the organisations that have written to us. As you can see, councillors, those words are quite strong words. And, and strong words require a strong apology. If the mayor has said that, and she used her language very carefully, that she wrote to these organisations about the Palestinian flag, but has not specifically apologised, that is very concerning to me because, again, it's not addressing the clear questions that have been raised by these independent and external organisations who are quite well respected. And they also cover constituencies which are very, very dear to us, whether it's the queer community or whether it's the Aboriginal community. So what my revised motion does is that it asks for the, the mayor's response to be made public, of course, with the permission of the three organisations involved. That, and it's important that the letters of council be made and public because what occurred, what occurred in a, in a, in a public arena, which was the council chambers. And therefore, it's only incumbent on council to make those letters public. So I hope that councillors will vote in supporting my revised motion so that we could put this issue way behind us. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Williams, would you like to speak to the motion?
Happy to reserve my rights to speak at the moment.
Okay. Are there any further? Sorry, I'm not sure whose stuff that was. Are there any further speak? Oh, councillor Hannan.
Thank you, May. I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion. I circulated, circulated before the meeting. It's basically to take out what is now points four and five. And to just simply note that the mayor has written letters to Midsummer, Dadi Manwara and DAC, Derby and Aboriginal Advisory Committee on Friday ninth, February twenty twenty-four. Yes, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillors, we've got the amendment on screen. Is that acceptable to the mover and seconder?
No, May, it's not acceptable to me.
Thank you. Do we have a second for councillor Hannan's amendment? Councillor Rennie, councillor Hannan, would you like to speak to your amendment?
Thanks, May. Can I ask that the clock is shown? Um, okay.
We have three minutes.
Great, thanks very much. So a quick summary of the facts. This started with a resolution brought by councillor Greco to the December twenty twenty-three meeting, which as far as I know was not in consultation with DAC or the Interfaith Advisory Committee or any other advisory committees, nor the other organisations mentioned in this motion. The resolution was supported unanimously with one councillor absent and it included raising the Palestinian flag until a further decision of council. Uh, these, these are just the facts. Bearing, so then for my part, bearing in mind advice at this time, it was over the summer break, that there was only one flagpole at that time used for community causes. I moved an urgent motion in early January twenty twenty-four. And I was very clear on key points at that time and I've continued to be clear on those points. Number one, I am committed, as are other councillors, to support solidarity for Palestinian and Israeli people and everyone impacted by the horrible conflict in the region. Number two, all flags have sensitivities and can contribute to both healing and damage and should have an end date. And I propose an end date, which has since been rescinded. Number three, the council celebrates many causes, events and communities, and we need to find ways to be inclusive of all and to promote understanding and cohesion in our own city. And this has never been about putting one cause against the other. I've said that many times. So then, it appears that councillor Greco did not consult with other councillors or via council management in contacting the three organisations mentioned. One of the, we, we, we don't know conversations, but there was one email that councillor Greco has copied and it's on the agenda. In my view, my personal view, that email presents a skewed version of my motion. It presents it in councillor Greco's words as disingenuous. I believe this has caused unnecessary concern in the community and it's damaged Darabin council's relations with important stakeholders. Notwithstanding this, as, as we've heard, the mayor, as our spokesperson, with, with actually responsibilities under the Local Government Act to be the lead spokesperson for the council, has written to address these concerns to each of the organisations mentioned. And I, I won't go into further detail, but I take it they're very positive letters. This is a common practice of mayors and I thank the mayor for it. And now we have a motion which is being proposed, which in my view only serves to exacerbate tensions with important community groups and another round of, of conflict. This motion is now redundant and in its current, in the previous form should not be supported. I encourage you to support my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hannan. Councillor Rennie.
I reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Are there any further speakers to the amendment?
May, can, through you, May, can we just check if councillor Lawrence is present? I, I can't see his camera on.
Yes, councillor Lawrence, are you able to turn your camera on? Thank you. Councillor Lawrence is in the meeting. Councillor Rennie, you've reserved your right. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Councillor Greco?
Oh, thank you, May Newton. Just a couple of points that I would raise of why I haven't allowed the amendment. Firstly, I think it needs to be said at the outset. I, I think councillor Hannan, with all respect to him, has been slightly disingenuous in his presentation of what he considers to be the, the facts. The point is, is that when the motion was raised back in December two thousand twenty-three, there was, these other, these other organisations had nothing to do with the motion at the time. And they were not involved in the, in the issue at the time and it had nothing to do with them. Why these other organisations did get involved is that it was a direct result of councillor Hannan's motion, which in their words, again, I stress, they said that they were being used and being weaponised and, and by the council as a result of councillor Hannan's motion. The other point that needs to be made is that when these organisations sent their letters, these organisations had access, and I know that for a fact, they had access to councillor Hannan's motion. So they were not going by what councillor Hannan said is my skewed interpretation of the events. They actually were going by the wording in councillor Hannan's motion. I say those things because I think we need to put those things clearly in perspective and, and not sort of sidestep of how this issue has come about and essentially who was at fault in regards to damaging some of the relationships, the good relationships that we have with these organisations. It was a direct result of the motion that was put forward by councillor Hannan. That's why, and I'll end on this note, that's why the points that I've raised in my motion and, and go towards addressing the issues of great concern to the organisations involved. And I think that they need to stand in the motion so people get a sense of proportionality of the, of the apology. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Councillor Williams.
Um, this is a conundrum that I feel that we're in, that has snowballed. I feel we're all quite passionate about the situation, particularly what's happened or still continually happening overseas. I guess we need to go forward. And I can understand where some councillors are coming from, including councillor Greco, by indicating that he would like to ensure that if the mayor is writing on behalf of council, particularly an issue like this, that all councillors need to be on board. And it would have been nice to have sent the, the letters probably a little bit earlier than this afternoon. Uh, in reference to flying one flag over another, to be honest, I would have preferred to have flown a peace flag. However, we were going in the motion of what other councillors were doing and I guess doesn't matter what had in the past, we're now going forward. So I think it's important that we continue going forward and we need to ensure that we are not hurting any parties. And we need to really do an apology and we need to show that we are genuine in where we feel and sit in this. And as I said, because it involves all councillors, I know the mayor does write many, many letters. But this is a very sensitive issue and there's many ways of skinning a cat. And as I think that we could have been more fully informed before tonight's council meeting on this issue.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers to this item? No. Councillor Rennie, would you like to speak as the seconder now?
Um, yes, thank you, May. I fully support councillor Hannan's very sensible, modest amendment, which I think provides us a way forward and a way to put a stop to the ongoing motions about this that are coming up and that have been extremely divisive in our community. The mayor has written three very thoughtfully written letters. I encourage councillors to spend some time considering the content of those letters. It is not standard for council to publish letters that it writes. If people who receive those letters wish to make them public to their stakeholders, I would expect that they could do that and that it would be courtesy for them to check back with the mayor. Um, I think that by, if, if we were to pass the motion put forward by councillor Greco tonight, it would be an example of further trying to weaponise and use those groups that have felt aggrieved through this process. Um, I am concerned about the initial lack of consultation. If, if there was a problem that began anywhere, it was that there was no consultation prior to the hastily drafted motion in December that council passed. Ordinarily with a motion that impacts on different groups, you would expect that that would have gone to the Sex, Sexuality and Gender Diversity Advisory Committee. It would have gone to the Darabin Aboriginal Advisory Committee because it did override existing motions that were on the books around flying those flags. This council has found a solution to that issue and I think it's time to put a stop to this. And councillor Hannan's motion does that without the further weaponisation that councillor Greco appears intent on compounding with his words that is chosen. So councillors in the interest of drawing a line under this pretty sorry affair.
May Newton, I have a, a point of order, if I may. And the.
Councillor Greco, which point of order?
Point of order in relation to, uh, ten point one point D and point E. Which is a.
Which is improper behaviour.
And, and offensive, offensive language.
Okay, and councillor Greco, what constitutes, sorry, improper behaviour?
Councillor Rennie, in her comments. Said that, um, I was compounding the issue and also made reference that, um. Um, that I was, um, using these groups and, and weaponising, um, them. In relation to me prosecuting, prosecuting this issue, which I believe is a complete distortion and a complete reversal of the facts. So all I gently ask, um, and you to, so that we can proceed and move forward, is that the councillor Rennie just withdraws her statement. And, um, and, and it takes the next two seconds to conclude, uh, uh, the comments.
Councillor Rennie, would you like to withdraw the statement?
Mayor, I'm doing no more than expressing my opinion about what's happened here. Uh, I understand it's an opinion that councillor Greco, uh, dislikes. Um, I, 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 I just to state that councillor Greco made very similar comments in relation to councillor Hannon and. Uh, he was allowed to do so because he was expressing his opinion. And, and rising to express a difference of opinion to that which is put is not a grounds for a point order.
Um, May Newton, if I just may point out that even though it is an opinion, um, uh. An, an opinion does not necessarily allow it to be a, a state, an improper, improper behaviour or an improper statement. Or a statement that is offensive. It can be an opinion, but it cannot pass that threshold of being offensive or improper behaviour. So I would ask you, Ben Newton, to, again, to politely just ask, um, councillor Rennie to withdraw the statement so that we can move on.
Mayor, that's fine. I'll withdraw the statement. Let's move on.
Uh, we'll move on. Councillor Rennie, you have two seconds to wrap up.
Um, thank you, colleagues. I just urge you to support, um, councillor Hannon's amendment so that we can draw a line under this. I think it's been described by several councillors as a sorry affair.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. So we'll now go to the vote on the amendment that councillor Hannon has put forward. All those in favour? That's councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannon, councillor McCarthy, all those against. That's councillor Messina, Greco, councillor Messina and councillor Greco, and all those abstaining. That's councillor Demetriades, councillor Williams and councillor Lawrence. So, uh, the way that our voting works is that abstentions are considered against. Uh, so that motion is lost and we'll now go back to the original motion. Are there any further speakers on the original motion, the original alternative? Councillor Lawrence?
Um, thank you, um, mayor Newton. Um, yeah, I believe I haven't spoken to this motion. Look, um, I do want to congratulate councillor Greco and, um, mayor Newton for going through a process of, um. Collaborating and drafting, um, uh, changes to this, uh, motion, um. I think, um, enough's been debated on the actual issue. Um, I would still. I suppose ask people to get in the helicopter, um, and look back over this issue. Um, with, um, some calmness and dispassion. And just, um, understand that this council has still passed the strongest motion possible. Uh, that's been done in Metro Melbourne in regards to, uh, urging federal government to actively. Uh, explore all options for promoting a ceasefire. So I think that's been lost and, yeah, I don't want to add to, uh, the confusion that's going on. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Lawrence. Are there any further speakers to the item? Um, uh, councillor Rennie?
Put the item to vote.
Uh, sorry, I saw councillor Rennie first and then I'll go to councillor Williams. Councillor Rennie?
Uh, mayor, thank you. I actually urge councillors to vote against this item because I think it's inflammatory and I think it is intended. Um, to embarrass council. I, I, I think as councillors, we need, uh, to question why we vote for something which at its intent seems. Uh, to have as a, an outcome, a desire to embarrass council. And I think it puts organisations on the spot in terms of asking them, uh. To make letters public that have been written to them in private. And I think that puts them in an awkward and compromising position. Where they may, uh, feel compelled to do something against their wishes. I've already said that if they wish to make them pri- uh, uh, public. That's something they can choose to do. I don't think we should be going to them and asking that they be public. I think that puts those organisations. In difficult spot and weaponises them further. So, um, I just urge councillors to vote against this. Because it's not our practice and our habit as a council to vote for motions that seek, uh, to embarrass. Uh, council and to draw attention, uh, to matters such as this correspondence between parties and the mayor. And between the mayor and those parties is, is not something I think we should make a habit of feeling compelled to bring to motions in the chamber and to publish. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rennie. Uh, do we have any further speakers? Councillor Williams?
Um, just want to put it out there that the point number five actually says with the permission.
Right, councillor Williams, have you spoken to the item?
No, I haven't. I spoke to the amendment that was voted down. Now I'm having my reserved rights to speak.
Oh, sorry. I, okay, so the, uh, right of reply would be, um. If no one else wants to speak, so I'll just check the, are there any further speakers to the item before we go back to the second of for her? Speaking.
May Newton, I'm the one that has a right of reply.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's correct. Um, so, and it was just a bit tricky as we had amendments, so. Um, so just confirming, yeah, the mover was councillor Greco, the seconder was councillor Williams. But councillor Williams, you haven't spoken to the item, is that right? Okay.
I reserve my rights, that's correct.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, so just confirming, yeah, you're right, councillor Greco. It's not a right of reply. It's your opportunity to speak. Please go ahead.
So what councillor Rennie is asking for and what councillor Greco is asking for is exactly the same thing. So councillor, uh, Gaetano, sorry, is, uh, councillor Greco is saying that with the permission. Of Dadi, the Darabban Aboriginal, uh, if they want to make it public, it can be made public. Councillor Rennie is saying, well, if they want to make it public, they can make it public on their own terms. Well, however, I find it's same for same. It's. We're skinning the cat, but how many different ways you want to do it? Either we put it up or they'll put it up. Uh, but we're asking for their permission first. So I'm not sure why everybody seems to be confused. Um, I'm happy to have this item put to vote and we can move on.
Thank you, councillor Williams. Are there any further speakers to the item?
May Newton, I just have a right of reply, if I may, just take a few seconds.
Yes, I'm just checking about if, uh, there's any further speakers. No, okay. Uh, councillor Greco, yes, you can go to your right of reply.
Okay, look, I'll be, I'll be really brief. Um, look, councillors, um, uh, the motion itself is not. What is putting the council into disrepute. Let's get that clear. This motion does not put council into disrepute. When council makes an error, the most powerful thing that we can do is to fess up, own up. To, um, any error that we may have made. That's why the mayor has written to the, um, three parties involved. Uh, and, and that, and that's the strongest thing, um, we can do and we should do. The, the other point that needs to be made is that, um, in regards to seeking, um, the permission to, um. Make these statements public. I've had a chance during the course of the debate to find the mayor's letters. And the mayor's letters actually talk about, um, um, seeking permission to share the letters publicly if need be. So what I'm suggesting is, in, in no way contradicts what, um, what the mayor has actually put in her letter. So it, it actually puts to bed the, um, um, you know, the argument that councillor Rennie, uh, was trying to prosecute. So councillors, if, we really need to put this behind us. We need to be mature about it. We need to be adults about this, councillors. What's taking place is actually far beyond. Our problem that we do here at the council. Let's. Get those apologies out there. They're already out there. Let's pass this motion, councillors. And let's put this sorry affair, um, behind us, um, because we need to build trust. With the community, with our stakeholders, and particularly the three organisations that in their own words, not my words. In their own words have felt enormously aggrieved and according to one organisation, uh, weaponised. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Greco. Uh, so I'll now put the motion to the vote. Uh, this is the alternative motion put forward by councillor Greco. All those in favour? It's councillor Demetriades, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, all those against. It's councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannon and councillor McCarthy, all those abstaining. Councillor Messina, how are you voting?
I'm voting for. Did I not put my hand up for four?
Okay, right. So I'll just confirm that. So the votes for our councillor Demetriades, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams and councillor Lawrence. Uh, uh, actually, I'll call it again just because I didn't see councillor Messina's hand. So. All those in favour of the motion, that's councillor. Demetriades, councillor Messina, councillor Greco, councillor Williams, councillor Lawrence, all those against councillor. Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannon, councillor McCarthy, that motion is passed. So we'll go on to the next item, which is public transparency of council decisions. Councillors, do you have any questions to the officers regarding this item? Councillor Demetriades?
Uh, yes, thank you, mayor. Uh, when the decision, if this motion passes and the decisions are made public, will they be, uh. Where will they be posted? Will they be, um, released, uh, in an agenda or will there be an attachment to an agenda? Or how will they be, um, released to the public?
Mr Smith, if you wanted to take that one?
Uh, through you, mayor, um. It's, um, I suspect the best way to do it would be through the government, an attachment to the governance report. We don't, the motion doesn't specify a way to do that. Um. Or, and that would make it publicly available. But I, I might take it on notice, but that's probably the, the process we would use so that we can be transparent, uh, through you, mayor.
Thank you. Mr Smith, are there further questions on the side of? No, okay. Uh, councillor Demetriades, did you have a motion you wanted to put forward?
Uh, yes, uh, mayor, I'd like to seek leave to, uh, put up the, uh, uh, an amended motion.
Thank you. Have you circulated the amended motion?
Uh, it was circulated by councillor Hannon just previously.
Okay. Yes, uh, can we get that on screen, please? Thank you. Is that your alternative motion, councillor Demetriades?
Um, yeah.
Yes, I, you're welcome to seek leave of the chairperson and I accept that. That's fine to put forward the alternative motion, um. Do we have a second of for this motion, councillor Hannon? Uh, councillor Demetriades, would you like to speak to the item?
Um, yes, please, just one moment. Sorry. Uh, yes, thank you. So under the Local Government Act, all information and decisions are to be public unless confidential. In many circumstances, the confidential nature has a limited period of time. Under the Darabban Public Transparency Policy, council has committed to being accountable to the community through transparency and by resolution. Uh, will, can release what was considered previously confidential. The matters listed in my NOM include the decision on Bill Laurioval, which I did not vote on. Despite some councillors already stating how they voted on this matter while it's still confidential. Other matters listed in my NOM include the confidential item arising from the VCAT decision on the, um, Northgate Plaza development. I believe it is important in this case for the public to be informed about this, since the matter was resolved in June twenty twenty-two. And I believe it's important for the public to know which councillors wanted to fight for improved community social and affordable housing. As well as community space for everyone to enjoy. And further, I believe it's necessary to make public the decision regarding the Alphington rail spur and the Melbourne Innovation Centre. While all these matters were once confidential, I believe they no longer require confidential protections. Um, and therefore should be released to the public as part of Darabban's commitment to transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Demetriades. Councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the item?
I'll reserve my right. Thank you, mayor.
Um, May Newton, if I may, um. Yeah, uh, look, I apologise for this. Um, I, I just wonder if I can ask a question before the formal debates start. Before the other councillors make a contribution to the debate. It's a very, it's a very quick and simple question, just to get some clarity about. Yeah, the question is this for, for officers, is that when we do make, um, uh, items, confidential items public. Are we also making public, um, how councillors voted on those, um, items or not?
Thank you, Mr Smith.
Uh, through you, mayor. Generally, um, you would only do that if there's been a division, but I'll, I'll take it on notice. I don't think it, um. Um, so generally, uh, it would, what's in the minutes would record how councillors have voted, so. Um. I think that's generally only when we have a division or we're online and, and it's in the minutes, but, um, I might need to take that on notice. Sorry, councillor Greco, as fast as clear as I can be right now.
Just a further clarification through you, the mayor, to the CEO. Um, we no longer have divisions, um. All, all decisions are, are recorded according to how councillors vote, so. Yeah, that's where my question was going to. It's already recorded, how councillors vote. And I'm just wondering whether that's also released with the confidential reports. Thanks.
Through you, mayor. Um, it would be as per our normal practice in the minutes. The fact that it's confidential is now public, I guess it would be, unless, unless governance can advise differently, but that, um. I'll just need to check that, but that, that would be my best advice at this point with that, um, seeing further advice from governance.
Thank you. Uh, councillor Hannon, did you, sorry, did you speak to the item?
Oh, no, I reserve my right, man.
You reserved. Okay, thank you. Um, do you have any further speakers to the item? No, okay. Uh, councillor Hannon, would you like to speak to the item?
Uh, thanks, mayor. Um, I support, uh, this, this motion, um. As, uh, as councillor Demetriades has, as mentioned, we, uh, council has a strong commitment to transparency. And, uh, in fact, all councils, uh, have the principle of, of making, um. Information available as a, as a general default, unless it's a particular reason otherwise. Uh, so. There are instances where it's, it's not appropriate, um, to, to have, um, make decisions. Uh, on, you know, in public, it may be sensitive in terms of, you know, personal information. There may be a commercial element to it, um, you know, particularly when we're talking about awarding contracts, um, tenders, um. Uh, there may be legal ramifications, you know, particularly if we're, if we're looking at a legal matter. Um, those conversations need to be confidential. So there are very, um, genuine, legitimate reasons why some decisions are made. Uh, um, public, uh, uh, sorry, confidential, um. And some of that is time sensitive, as in it's confidential now, but in a month's time it will no longer be confidential. You know, it's, it's, it doesn't have an impact. Some of it actually will remain confidential for, I don't know what the end period is, but a long time. You know, certain things just shouldn't be made public. Um. We've got nothing to hide here. As a group, you know, we're all committed to acting in the best interests of council. I know we all do that to the best of our ability. Uh, I'm very comfortable, uh, with, uh, making. Uh, decisions, uh, uh, public as appropriate and rely on advice from, um. From management as to what's appropriate and what, what's really not. The one thing that's been added here is a more systemic view, so not sort of cherry picking. A few ones that like to make public, but actually say, let's look at the lot, let's look at everything over the last, say, six months. Allow council management to come back with some recommendation. We can take it from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, so we will now go on to the vote on this item. All those in favour? And that's, sorry, councillor Newton, councillor Rennie, councillor Hannon, councillor Demetriades, councillor Messina, councillor McCarthy, councillor Greco and councillor Lawrence, all those against. And abstaining. Abstaining councillor Williams, uh, that motion is passed. Uh, so we'll now go on to. The next item, which is item five point four, Northgate Aquatic and Recreation Centre. Are there any questions on the side? Oh, sorry, councillor Messina?
I'm dehydrated. Can, do you mind if I can get some water, please? Can we just have a two-minute break? Got no water. Um, it's really hot. Got no water. Um, it's really hot.
Uh, we can adjourn the meeting for three minutes, so we'll come back at seven fifteen. Council's at seven fifteen, so I'll just get you to come back online. Just wait for a few more councillors to turn back on the screen. Okay, so I've got, I've got six councillors. Uh, can I get uh councillor Hannan, you're back, councillor Williams and councillor Demetriadis? Thank you. Uh councillor Demetriadis, are you with us? Councillor Demetriadis, I'll just get you to turn back on your camera so we can restart the meeting. Thank you. Okay, so we've got uh, we've got councillors back online. Uh, so where we were was item five point four, Northgate Aquatic and Recreation Centre. And do we have a councillor ready?
Um, thank you, mayor. I seek to have this item deferred. Uh, it was never my intention for it to be held at a special council meeting. Uh, in the agenda it states, uh, take notice that a special council meeting is my intention to move. Uh, that statement has been incorrectly attributed to me. It was never my intention to move uh this motion at a special council meeting. I seek to have it deferred to the next ordinary council meeting.
Thank you. Do we have a second for the deferral motion? Councillor McCarthy?
No, I have a question.
Yeah, I I have a question also before we see.
Uh, yes, that's fine because I haven't uh, I haven't given an opportunity for questions. So councillor Demetriadis.
Um, I just wanted to ask the rationale behind why we're moving it again. Because I think it came to council in November, was it, last year? And why we're moving it again to February? I don't see the point of it. We're just delaying other things from coming to council in February. So what what's the rationale behind it? What, how is it going to be of benefit to council?
So I don't think we tend to ask rationale for deferral motions as a practice. Um. Councillor Greco, sorry, was that all your questions, councillor Demetriadis?
Well, I just wanted to know what benefit it would be to put it to another council meeting.
Councillor Rennie, did you want to?
Mayor, I think out of respect for my role as the councillor who moved, who uh put forward the motion and given how strongly I feel that the cooling of special council meetings is very poor governance practice and is costing our community a huge amount of money, I feel quite strongly that I do not wish this item of business which I raised to be heard at a special council meeting. I do not wish to be associated with the additional expense that our community is incurring for every minute that we stay online here. Um, accordingly, I'd like the matter to be heard uh in the normal course of events. Yes, it has been delayed. Um, I accept those delays as part of the way in which uh council could operate and would be happy for it to be on the agenda for the next council meeting. That's my problem, but I suggest we just vote on whether uh it is, whether we proceed. Uh, I don't think it's useful to have questions on this matter.
I'm sorry, mayor, I haven't, that wasn't my question. My question was how is it of benefit to council, not to councillor Rennie, but to the whole council of deferring it, like we're, we're here already.
Who are you asking the question? Oh, sorry, I'll I'll go to Mr Smith. Thank you.
Mayor, can I just uh through you seek some governance advice? I believe this is a procedural item, procedural motion. I don't believe there should be questions or debate, but I'll just check with Mr Smith, the other Mr Smith if I can or.
Yes, that would be a great question. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. In relation, relation to a procedural motion, there can be questions in relation to the reasoning of the move, but there's no other questions allowed.
Thank you. Uh, okay, so that's fine. Uh, councillor Greco, did you have a question about?
Yes, I did, mayor, if I may. Um, uh, I just wanted to get some governance advice through the, through, through the CEO. Um, in order to withdraw a motion, um what is the practice in regards to that? Could we just get some understanding in relation to that? A- and also just to get some understanding too about, um, I think a statement was made that this meeting is actually costing council more. Um, I I just want to get some clarification, um i- if 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 this is actually in in effect costing council more.
So I don't think it's withdrawing, it's about deferring the motion, but um, Mr Smith, did you want to comment?
Um, I can't, I can't comment on costs other than, I think we've had four specials now in between since the last ordinary or or since December. So obviously that is cost in terms of governance, management and staff time supporting special meetings instead of um spending their time um on council plan actions. So this depends whether people get paid overtime or not, but certainly there's additional costs with security around meetings when they are face-to-face. Um, they've all been online, so the cost has been, has been limited. Um, um, so I think there was one face-to-face meeting where there would have been significant extra costs from security and those sorts of things. So um there are some additional costs, but I think it's more in terms of cost in terms of productivity rather than financial costs when uh we're supporting a lot of special meetings. I think the second part of the question councillor Greco um uh was governance, a governance question. Can I just clarify that question again, please?
Y- yes, look, I I I may be wrong, but I I recall that in the um, in the governance rules, there's a a process to um and withdraw motions. Uh, I'm just trying to, trying to understand that to make sure that we are doing, going through the correct process. Look, I could be wrong there, but I just recall that there was a process that we needed to go through.
Mayor, if you withdraw my motion, I've, I've effectively moved the motion that we just defer to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Nine point two two, mayor. Nine point two two, mayor. Um, deferring the motion, but debate hasn't com- commenced. It's the correct procedural motion.
Yes, it's a procedural motion. Uh, so we'll go back to, I'll close questions. Uh, so we'll now go back to the procedural motion, which doesn't require debate. So we've got a mover councillor Rennie, we've got a second councillor McCarthy. Um, so this is a motion to defer this item to the ordinary meeting on the twenty sixth. All those in favour? It's councillor Nusshin, councillor McCarthy, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence, councillor Hannan. All those against? Councillor Demetriadis, councillor Williams, all those abstaining. Councillor Greco, councillor Missina. Okay, so that motion of deferral has been passed, so we'll deal with this item at the ordinary meeting. So we'll now go on to the next item, which is item six, urgent business, and there is no urgent business items to consider this evening. And we'll go into item seven, consideration of reports considered confidential. So councillors, there is one confidential item to be considered this evening. And we now have to close the meeting to the public. So in accordance with section sixty six two of the Local Government Act twenty.
Mayor, I just have a question before we close the meeting.
Okay.
Um, I don't think the confidential item was on the public agenda, was listed. Is that correct? Because I couldn't see it. So I wasn't even sure it was coming up because I think it was called because it's it was supposed to happen at the previous meeting, but we didn't finish the confidential items that was called for this meeting. But I'm a bit confused as to what's, what are we doing because it's not on the agenda. The confidential item wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, uh councillor, sorry councillor. Mr Smith, did you want to respond to that or get governance advice?
I'll ask governors to respond. I I didn't check the.
Uh, through the chair, if you could just give me a few minutes to double check that, please?
Yes, thank you. Anthony Smith.
Mayor, if I may? Um, I mean, if 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 I may, if it is an item that I suspect it is now, then I didn't declare a conflict at the beginning because I was not aware it was going to be tabled. I was understanding it was going to be withdrawn in this meeting. So I equally.
Anthony Smith, I'll just, I'll just ask you to be conscious of confidentiality. Uh, Mr Smith?
I was.
Yeah. Through you, mayor.
Through the chair.
Uh, Anthony, you go, please.
Anthony Smith.
Yep, through the chair. It was on page seven of the agenda. The item was listed.
Thank you, Mr Smith. Uh, so if there's no further questions, I'll go on to the, where we were. So close the meeting to the public. In accordance with section sixty six two of the Local Government Act twenty twenty, council may resolve to close the meeting to members of the public to consider the item designated confidential in accordance with section three one of the act. Councillors, is there a mover of recommendation to close the meeting to the public and move into the confidential meeting? Councillor Hannan, and do I have a second for that motion? Councillor Williams, all those in favour? Uh, that's councillor Nusshin, councillor McCarthy, councillor Missina, councillor Rennie, councillor Lawrence, councillor Hannan, councillor Williams. Okay, and all those against? And all those abstaining. Councillor Demetriadis and councillor Greco. Okay, um, so that motion to go to confidential is passed. And I declare the meeting closed to the members of the public at seven twenty six P M and request officers, please cease the live streaming. And can I confirm with the host uh when the live streaming is stopped, please?